Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here. Very good, thank you everyone. Now, just a reminder, since this is a special council meeting, we have two things on the agenda. We cannot add any additional items on the agenda per state statute. With that, Robert, do you want to go ahead and introduce the first item, which is the utility rate study and recommendations?
Yes, thank you Mayor. Tonight, we're here before you at, at the last council meeting, we were asked to go out to the public and present the two scenarios for the water rate increases and also the sewer rate increases. Over the past couple of weeks, we've done that. On October fourteenth, we met at the South Dakota School of Mines and Technology, and we presented the, Steve Burian from AE2S presented the rate analysis to the public. I believe we had about six people from the public that attended that meeting. The following night, we met up at West Middle School, and we presented that very same information, and I believe there were eight to nine people in attendance that night. And we essentially, we met to get their input. We presented for about forty-five minutes, the same presentation that I believe this body has seen. And then we just opened it up for question and answer. And you will find attached to your agenda tonight, the questions that were asked, and I didn't really have time to put the answers in there, but those were the questions that were documented in the minutes. A couple pages of those, and they ran the gamut from, anything from, why can't we build a dam in the valley to collect water, to where's the water coming from, can Vision 2012 money be used? Explain our relationship with Ellsworth Air Force Base, a number of questions. And so we addressed all of those questions. I think it was a positive meeting. I will say that at one meeting, we even received almost a standing ovation, so that was quite unexpected. We did, we did have another meeting. It was, I was invited to speak up at General Beetle to a neighborhood watch group. I believe there were about fifteen people in attendance, and I also gave a presentation up there. And I'm actually scheduled to present to another group, Democracy in Action, I believe is their name, on the water rates here in the next couple of weeks. So, we've really made a good faith effort to get out to the public, get this information in their hands, help them understand it, and answer any questions that they have about it. Now, we've accomplished that, and we're here before you tonight, I guess, to say, we still stand behind the scenario two option for the water rate increases, and then the scenario that Steve Burian presented for the sanitary sewer rate. I believe that we've answered the public's questions. I think the public understands better now why the rate increases are necessary, and that a large portion of that is for the water treatment plants. But even without those, the rate increases are still necessary, based on the cost of providing services. I believe that the recommendations that have come before you are very fair and equitable. They're defendable, and I believe that they keep us on track with allowing this community to grow for decades into the future. And I firmly believe that without these rate increases and without these water treatment plants, we're putting our future in jeopardy. So, I stand again before you today, telling you that these water treatment plants are necessary, and that we've made a very prudent decision on how we've structured this rate for water and sewer. A couple other things I wanted to comment on tonight. One of the things that we heard from the public was, how are people on fixed income going to be able to afford these increases? And with the help of the mayor, we've researched some available options, and I'm before you tonight to talk about one that, to me, looks very defendable. It's very understandable. It's similar to a program that the state already has in place, and that's the assessment freeze on property taxes. And how this program would work, there's several, there are several components to it that a person has to qualify to enter into the program. One is based on the income of the family. If there's a single-member household, if you make less than twenty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars, that would be one of the things to qualify. If it's a multiple-member household, that income threshold is brought up to twenty-eight thousand two hundred and seventeen and ten dollars on an annual basis. You also must be sixty-five years of age or older, or have some disability as defined by the Social Security Act. Another component to that is ownership of your home with an assessed value of less than a hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, or the ability to prove that you rent or lease your property. Now, I have been told that within Rapid City, there are two-hundred-and-ninety people that qualify for that. I suspect if you open that up to people who rent or lease their property, which, of course, the tax assessment doesn't qualify those types of individuals, you might see that double. I believe that would provide the level of comfort that would be necessary for those people on fixed income, and we would freeze their water and sewer rates in the two thousand and eight rate structure, and that would be good as long as council felt that was appropriate. But it would provide some relief to those individuals who need it most. And so, in addressing some of the comments that we heard from those people on fixed income that have very limited resources, I believe that this program would help with that. There were several other comments that we received from various aldermen, and I wanted, well, I made the promise that I would go through those tonight, so I will go through each of these. There's about ten questions, and I'll provide the answer. The question was, if you remember, on the tier rate structure, there were four tier rates, based on units, the number of units of water you use. And the question was, under the current rate structure, from zero to ten is tier one, and anything above ten is to tier two, and then so on and so forth. Where does that tier two start? Does it start at ten point zero one, or does it start at eleven? And under the existing or the proposed rate structure, it would start at ten point zero one. Now, leading into that question, another question was asked is, what are the average units of water that we have seen for the average single-family homeowner over the past four or five years? Now, looking at it in two thousand and four, there were ten point seven one was the average, no, not units of water that we're using. In two thousand and five, that went up to eleven point one eight. In two thousand and six, it dropped slightly to eleven point zero two. In two thousand and seven, it was ten point five eight. And this year, we've actually seen it, it's coming in at eight point five, so quite a bit lower than that ten. And that would likely go down because we're through the irrigation season. So, when you take an average of those, all those years, the average is ten point four units to the average single-family homeowner per month. Another question that we received is, what would be the effect of changing the tier one from zero to ten to zero to eleven? Essentially, just increasing it, giving them one more unit under that cheaper block of water. And what that would mean in two thousand and eight would be an average saving of seventeen cents per month. Now, what would that mean in two thousand and thirteen, the fifth year of that rate? And my quick calculation shows that that would be an additional twenty-four cents per month. So, seventeen plus twenty-four, forty-four? Yeah, forty-four cents a month. So, that's what, that's what the impact would be of moving that cheaper water from zero to ten to zero to eleven. Another question we received is, I noticed in the presentation that the irrigators will see a large increase. Who will this affect most, and do we know what extent this will impact the Rapid City School District? The first part of that question, who will that impact the most? It's really anybody with an irrigation meter. And if you recall, in the recommendations that AE2S is bringing forward, commercial properties, it's recommended that they have an irrigation meter, so that the water that they're using that goes is more their domestic usage. Say it's a restaurant, they're using it for cooking and cleaning. That would be metered and charged separately than the water that's going out in their boulevard area and is watering their grass and shrubs. So, almost all commercial users would have that irrigation meter. So, that is the water that would be the most expensive. It's the water that's used in the summer for part of the year, but it's the high-peak water. Second part of that question is, to what extent will this impact the Rapid City School District? And I'll say, it's a pretty significant impact, because they have a lot of property, and they have a lot of grass. So, the grass that they irrigate with, their football fields, would have that irrigation rate on it. However, the water they use for cooking for the cafeteria, using the restrooms, kind of their domestic usage, would still be within that, the commercial rate. So, it'd be outside of that irrigation rate. Now, to what extent, we did provide this information to Mr. Minks of the school district, so he was aware, and he could budget appropriately if this is the route that's chosen. But it's too hard for us to tell exactly how these rates would impact him financially bottom line. He did look at that. I didn't have a chance to get with him today to see if he had any comments on that, but he has not contacted us back, so I'm not sure, not sure to what extent that impact will be on the school district. Also, another question, how about the TAP service fees? Are those being recommended for an increase? And yes, those are. And we foresee the increases on the TAP fees being very in line with what we're seeing for the average rate increases for all of our customer classes. So, it'll be of the order of magnitude that you've seen for the residential, commercial rate increases as well. So, there will be increases on those TAP fees. And then, I believe that was the last. I did have another question that just kind of was asked verbally of me today, and that was, what about the people that summer elsewhere, and they summer here? They only live here half a year. If you recall, in the sewer rate structure, we were actually looking at having a, kind of a meter fee. Right now, there is not a meter fee. And what that's allowed people to do is, for their sewer, if they weren't here, they really weren't paying much of a bill at all. I believe it was a minimum of five dollars or something like that. So, we're really generating no money from that house, even though everything that's been built into the system accounted for somebody living there twenty-four hours a day. The lines were sized to accommodate those flows. The lift stations have been sized to accommodate those flows, the treatment plant. Everything has been designed to have a customer using that. And so, when people leave for half of the year, we're still having to provide that ability to have sewer. If they were to sell their home and somebody lives there year-round, we need to have that ability to sewer them. But right now, through the rate structure, we're not capturing that cost, because they might be in another community for half of a year. So, and that was another question that came forward today. So, I believe those were all the questions that I was asked to answer for this council, and I believe we answered all the questions at the public meetings for the public. And I stand before you today, still recommending that we move forward with scenario two rate structure for the water, and the only scenario that was presented for the sewer, the sewer enterprise. So, what I would like to do is get the council's approval tonight to bring forward the necessary ordinances to implement those two rate structures, bring that through the normal process, which would be legal and finance, and finally city council, so. Now, with that, I'm available to answer questions. We have Dan Coons here as well. We have Steve Burian from AE2S, and we'd be willing to answer or attempt to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Before we get too far here, let's look for a motion, so at least we're in the right order here. I'm going to go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock. Did you have a motion?
Just to put it on the floor, is to direct staff to do the ordinance for scenario two with the proposed sewer rates, with the available relief option for fixed-income people with the special assessments and the process that you had put forward to us on the dial, so.
So, we have a motion. The motion on the floor is to direct staff to prepare or draft the ordinances using scenario two, and also inserting the, and also the sewer rates that were proposed in addition to, including the fixed-income relief. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion, a second. Discussion, Deb, did you start the floor if you wanted it?
Nope, I'll just listen to discussion.
Very good. Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. See, Robert, I should have asked this at our meeting that we had, but on the tier structure, when you go into the second tier, or the next tier, are you charged all of the water usage for that month into the second tier, or does it just, the overage amount, say from ten to eleven, to twelve to thirteen, be in charge of the second tier?
Thank you, good question. Mr. Ellis.
Yes, the way that would work is, let's just take an example. You use fifteen units in one month. The first ten units are charged that cheaper rate of, I believe it's two dollars and thirteen cents. The last five units that you use between ten and fifteen go to that next structure, the rate that's scheduled. So, the first ten are on the cheaper, the next five are on the higher. So, no, it doesn't bump you up, so all your usage is in the higher tier. No, it does not do that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Additional questions? Motion on the floor is for approval to direct staff to prepare the ordinances. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Robert, in terms of the snowbirds, they would be, where would they fit into the scenario? I mean, you just, you said you were, would be abandoning this five buck meter fee, but how, where would they fit into this?
Where they would fit in, excuse me. Where they would fit in is, for the months that they're not here, obviously, they're not going to use any water or any sewer. So, their unit charge for water and sewer would be, it'd be zero. They would have the meter fee, and that is, I don't see the meter fee here in front of me, five to seven dollars per month, somewhere in that order of magnitude, depending on the size of meter that they have. But essentially, that's, it's like a reserved capacity. We are reserving you the ability to use that water and sewer. And so, reserving that is coming in the form of the meter fee. There would be no unit, because they're not passing any units through the system or taking any of our units.
Paying for capacity.
Exactly.
You start the floor, Mayor.
That's my question, thank you.
Very good. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Robert, just a question about the fixed income relief part of this. You threw, you started saying some about an income threshold. Will the language that we see come back, will that be with numbers plugged in? I mean, as cost of living adjusts, and social security adjusts? I mean, do we have to adjust that number every year? Or will we just put a number in there to say, a certain percentage of the poverty level, or a certain percentage of something else? Or will there actually be numbers in there that we will then have to change the ordinance every year?
Mr. Ellis.
I would prefer, I'd feel most comfortable, from a defendability standpoint, that we'd essentially model it exactly after the state requirement. So, it'd be consumer with whatever changes the state makes in the future. If there is a cost of living that they implement, that we would also apply that to this program for water and sewer. And I think it would be easiest for those people who know they qualify for the assessment tax freeze, they would automatically know, hey, I apply for the water and sewer. And they would just bring their certificate, or whatever it is, that piece of paper that they have from the state, show it to us, and we would know that they qualify for that program, they would qualify for our program as well. So, I'd like to model it as closely as possible. And really, from a standpoint of equitability, that we're not giving a certain type of, or a certain customer class a break, and everybody else has to, has to pay for it, that we model it off the state program, because at least in the court, it would be more defendable that way. That this is a program that models exactly a state program.
Mr. Chapman, you start the floor, sir.
Just, we'll see that language before.
Absolutely. Very good. Let's go to Alderman Bill O'Krepeke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I know a lot of work's been put into this, and a lot of money and time and effort has, and I certainly appreciate what you've done. I do have a couple of thoughts that, you know, I'd like to suggest to my colleagues and other people that may be listening, that what kind of, you know, where are we in terms of thinking about changing the threshold between the tier one and tier two? I mean, if we're looking at the average family of having it over ten, ten units per, you know, ten CCFs, as opposed to, say, eleven or twelve, you know, it all goes back to kind of where Malcolm was going, and trying to support people that will be affected more than perhaps others. I'm not saying definitely, but perhaps more. I would like to see it a little bit, I'd like to see that threshold raised just a little bit, maybe to eleven or twelve, to make it, to make it more equitable. And, and nobody, we really haven't talked about the sewer rates either. You know, do we need to raise them both at the same time? Do we need to go both ways? For example, there's, there could be some opportunities where we may be able to save a little money. I know, I know the sewer line that's going from Fifth and Captain to sixteen is on your radar screen for zero, for oh-nine or oh-ten, and that's somewhere between, you know, around two million dollar, two million dollar mark. Well, right now, we're, we're still in the mix of perhaps having a TIF and a developer pay for it, rather than coming it out of our enterprise funds. So, there's, there's still some things in the works that may, that may support not raising the sewer rates at this time. And, you know, I'm not sure where we want to go as a, as a council, but maybe we're, maybe we're jumping the gun just perhaps a little bit on the sewer rates. And I'd also like to have this as a group to consider raising that threshold to the, to the tier two, between tier one and tier two. You know, I'm just going to throw that out for everybody to think about, and see where they want to go, and see if that makes any sense, or if there's any traction with that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Additional lights? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Robert, I have a question for you. In the booklets that we've been given, shows increases from two thousand and nine to two thousand and eighteen. Now, these are five years' worth of increases that are being considered, or ten?
Robert, it's five.
Yes, it, these are five that'll be before you. But if I may qualify that, if we elect to go with option two, we'll be coming forward with a five-year rate structure. There will be more rates after that, rate increases that are necessary. There'll be single-digit increases, going in at nine to eight percent. If we go with scenario one, you remember, that was a very drastic increase in rates the first five years. Year six, seven, those would taper off to inflationary, where there'd be three to four percent, just to keep up with the cost of doing business. The rate that we're recommending in scenario two, because it does delay some of those costs, rather than year one, our customers are hit with a twenty percent increase, whatever, twenty-two, I forget exactly what that percentage was. Something that I felt was too dramatic to hit in one year to our customers. So, the rate that comes forward will be an ordinance for a five-year rate structure, but there will be additional rates increases that are needed in year six, seven, and eight.
Alderman Quaker, you start the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. So, if, if who was ever on the city council in two thousand and thirteen declines the following five years of rate increases, then that mean the bond, that means the bond can't be paid off. Is that correct?
Or.
Mr. Ellis, go ahead.
Yes, or other measures such as twenty-twelve, or some other funding source would have to be there to back the bonds, yes.
So, we're going to bond for twenty years?
Thirty years.
Thirty years? And we're going to do five years' worth of, of rate increases?
Yes.
Just for a point of clarification, Robert, we need to be a little bit careful here. The proposal is the SRF loans would be a twenty-year loan, going out to the market. The bond market would be thirty years, is that correct? Okay, thank you. And Alderman Quaker, you start the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. A CCF is seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty gallons, is that correct?
Seven forty-eight, seven hundred and forty-eight.
Seven hundred and forty-eight. So, a point five eight of a, of a CCF is a significant number, in my view. And, you know, I am, you know, I am concerned, and I realize that the statement is being made that it's really a minor increase, but when you add a, a minor increase on top of a series of major increases, in my view, it's still a, a major increase. And I think that we should strongly consider moving the, the base CCF of eight to, to twelve. I think that would be more realistic, after looking at the last several years of, of increases. So, several other comments that I would like to make, but I'd like to offer an amendment to the motion on the floor, to ask that the, that the rates be structured so that step one is zero CCF to, to twelve, and then twelve point zero one and higher is the next step.
Okay. Do we, we have a second? Okay, very good. We'll be taking this up as an amendment only, so we'll talk only about the amendment, then we'll, we'll vote either up or down on the amendment, we'll go back. Robert, did you have a comment on this?
Yep, that certainly can be done. I don't object to that. At the end of the day, it's a revenue adequacy question. So, if we lose money from these two units, we have to make up for that someplace else. So, I would say that if we move that first tier to up to twelve units, we may have to adjust the next two or three tiers and increase those prices slightly. I don't suspect it'll be a big increase, but at the end of the day, it's a revenue question. We have to have a certain amount of revenue.
Okay. Alderman Quaker, you start the floor. Anything else? Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson. Keep in mind, we will talk only about the amendment on the floor. The amendment is to increase it from ten to twelve. Okay, everyone clear on that? Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
I'll hold my comments, because they were in regard to a little broader issue, and it would be more appropriate in the, in a general discussion.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Based on your average units, what was your average unit? Was it eight, or was it ten, Robert? I can't remember.
Robert, go ahead.
Ten point four per month, and then eight, so.
Yeah, looking at two thousand and four through today, it's ten point four units is the average.
And we're going up to ten units?
Ten.
Okay. So, based on what you've just said, and most people average about ten units, it seems like going to twelve wouldn't make sense. If, if I was seeing that a lot of the lower income, or we had a lot of the people that needed that help, needed to be a little bit higher in order to maintain, that would probably change my mind. But based on an average for most people is ten, I don't see the reasoning to go up to twelve. So, I guess those are my comments, and why I won't be voting on the motion. Not that it's, it's a good motion to think about, but based on average units, it's only ten, so it doesn't seem right to go up to twelve.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A little feedback there, sorry about that. Understanding that, obviously, that this scenario was built around that ten mark, and if we, if we consider the twelve mark, then without that information, it'd be hard to make a decision based upon, obviously, somewhere, somebody's going to have to pay increase to higher levels. Is there, is that a possibility of doing that on a spreadsheet here tonight? Or is that something that would have to, that would have to be? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Bill O'Krepeke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, it just seems to me that, that it would be appropriate to go with a higher threshold, just to take care of the people that would be using less. And you're saying, well, ten, you know, you know, it almost begs the question, where'd you get the average from? How did you establish the average? You know, and that's, you know, and you can go either way on many of this. I mean, you could talk to some families that, that are a family of four, they're using twelve and thirteen, and still trying to conserve. And so, you know, I don't have a problem going with twelve, and then having the upper, upper ends pay a little bit more. And that may, that may be just the encouragement to conserve like that we need in the first place, anyway. So, and I'm looking at, you know, forty-four cents a month probably doesn't seem like a whole lot. But when you start adding forty-four cents here, seventy-five cents there, a dollar fifty there, all of a sudden, it starts to begin to add up. And personally, I don't have a problem with it, but, but, you know, that may not be the case for everybody. And so, it just seems to me like we should try to do what we can to help support people that are on fixed incomes, whether it be the elderly, or even the twenty or thirty-year-old, or, or people that don't make as much money. So, that's where I'm at on that. I, I'm, we'll see where the rest of the conversation goes.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question would be, I think that, as I think about this whole scenario just generally, and with water especially, the message has to be really clear that water is the real question of the West. And the message that I wish everyone in our community understand is, the water is a resource that needs to be conserved. And so, ten units still seems to me like a reasonable threshold. And it still, in my mind, in some degree, conveys the message of conservation. And so, I, I guess I have some hesitancy about a higher threshold.
Yeah, thank you. Let's see, I am going to skip to Alderman Malcolm Chapman, who has not had the opportunity to speak on the, on the amendment, and then we'll come back to the other light. So, let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just maybe a question for the council, and maybe for Sam. I would probably ask if you would withdraw the amendment, and then maybe have Robert just put that on a spreadsheet, just to see where the numbers are, and where the numbers shake out down the line, in terms of the higher rates that would be necessary to accommodate the total cost needed. And I just recommend that, because I, I think we're flying a little blindly here. At least we have numbers that we know that we're dealing with. We don't know what those higher rates would be. I feel uncomfortable voting on something where you say, well, it'll go up a little bit. We don't know what that little bit is. I'm not saying, let's not look at it, but as it comes through the process, through legal and finance, I mean, maybe we could have a spreadsheet to say, this is what would happen if we made the threshold twelve instead of ten. And then we would really know what those numbers are. If we wanted to make the amendment then, we surely could.
Thank you. Just a reminder to the council, there's a couple reasons that ten was chosen. Number one was, that was the standard as far as the average. The second thing is, is when we're comparing ourselves to other communities, that is somewhat the threshold that all other communities use. And if you go to a different number than that, it would be very hard for Rapid City to compare ourselves as far as cost for our water, if we have a different measuring stick here. So, let's go to, I gotta think here. I'm going to just take it down the line. I believe everybody's had the opportunity to speak to this. So, we'll go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Just a couple of things. People are talking about that this would help the elderly and the fixed income if we went to twelve, and on average of four people. That doesn't make sense, because most people that are elderly have one or two, and it doesn't make sense on fixed doesn't make sense on fixed income, maybe not in some cases, more than four people. And I, a lot of times, you're getting subsidies and different things that are helping you if you are on fixed incomes or lower incomes in that sense. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is, my beauty shop uses about fourteen units of water, and that's washing hair all day, and, I mean, that's a lot of water. So, if you're using, again, if average is ten, it's not about that we don't want to help the fixed income or the elderly or people that need help. That's why we have a, what do we call it? A available assessment or relief option. So, why change the rates from, for two points when we have an option for the people that need help? Because that's what this is all about, that's what we're talking about right now for the two points. And again, fourteen units is what I use in my beauty shop, that's a lot of water. So, I believe too, what Karen is saying, there's a, there's a reasonable threshold, and this is a reasonable threshold for any family to use, and on an average, could you tell me by any average what, I mean, you have a family of how much? Six, Robert? What's your average for your threshold?
You can't ask that question, sorry.
I mean, I mean, okay, sorry.
He has kids.
But, I, I mean, on average, how much water do you guys use?
I don't know.
But I guess that, but that's my point. I mean, not that point that you don't know, but that's probably a lot of water. We had a lot of water and when we were using ours, and I don't even think, we had eleven kids, I don't remember using that much units of water. So, again, if it's about the low income and helping people, that's what the available relief option is for, for average people in Rapid City, ten is a good average. So, I, I'm not in favor of, or I should say, looking at it is good. It's always good to see it on paper, what Sam's talking about, but I think in the end, we're gonna come up with the same average as ten, just because it is a, is a good average.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not to mean to digress the conversation, but I want the relief option, and we talked about the renters versus homeowners, it's obvious that people that are in lower fixed incomes usually predominantly probably are not homeowners, and I didn't know if the motion was made to cover that period of people or not.
Yes.
It was made to cover the renters also.
Yes.
Okay. The other question, I think, Robert, after, after, you know, touring the water plant with you today in Jackson Springs and, and Mountain View, one of the questions came to mind because I do, I do rent to people, I do have some rental properties that I rent to people, and understanding that there's some buildings, and there's probably private, a lot of, a lot of buildings in Rapid City that have multi-units that only have one meter, which their usage may be distributed through the, through the, the, the units that are available there, and how does that affect somebody? Because they're, obviously that pass flow will go right to them to raise their, their rent or whatever, and how, so how does that work, Robert?
Robert?
Yes. Excuse me. The way that works is one meter, one bill, in other words, one account, we send to whoever is the account holder on that. You might have that split off, fourplex, you've got one meter, you're providing water through that one meter. We would provide a bill to the person who has the name on that one meter account.
Okay, I understand that part, but now, say if their usage, even though they have four units and their usage is thirteen, so they go from ten to thirteen and they pay a higher rate, even though there's, even though they're paying garbage for four units, sewer for four units.
The, the way that would work, multifamily residential home is what you're talking about, depending on the meter size, the smallest meter size we have is a five-eighths inch. The tier structure would be zero to ten, ten to forty, forty to seventy-five, and seventy-five above, pay a different rate for each one of those categories. You go to a three-quarter inch, it's bumped up, zero to fifteen units, fifteen to forty-five, forty-five to eighty. If you go up to the next meter size, a one-inch meter, goes zero to twenty units, twenty to fifty, fifty to eighty-five. The larger the meter, the more customers you have, the average for those customers brings that tier structure up. So, that's how the rate structure would be developed for those multifamily residential buildings.
And I'm, I'm trying to understand this. So, say a person has a house on West Boulevard that they've converted into a fourplex, and at that time, there was a specific meter, and that, that fourplex now uses fifteen CCF in that unit. Well, they, they go from zero to ten or is it go zero to fifteen?
It's based on the meter size that they have. The water line coming into the house, the smallest we have is a five-eighths inch, I'd be surprised if you had a fourplex on a five-eighths inch. Most likely, it's gonna be a three-quarter or a one-inch. When you, the larger the size pipe, the tier structure gets bigger and bigger between each category. So, like I quoted, for a one-inch meter, which I wouldn't be surprised if a fourplex had a one-inch meter, instead of being zero to ten units, it's actually zero to twenty units, because we realize more people are using that.
I just, I think that when we're talking about affecting families and, and people with limited incomes, they're obviously living in rental properties and sometimes converted rental properties and those types of things, so they'll have a great effect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. If the secondary will accept this and, and the chair will allow, I would like to amend my motion instead of, instead of amending the ordinance structure to bring forward an analysis of what the structure would look like at twelve CCF, twelve CCF, so that way the council, if it so choose at a subsequent meeting, could then amend it if, if they so chose.
I gotta, where'd Jason go? I, I understand what you're saying, so I just, I have to make sure it's germane to the motion on the floor. And we can certainly do that, I'm just not sure if it's, help me out here, Jason, I just wanna make sure to do this right. Did you hear the question?
I did. I think if the motion maker wanted to offer that as a clarification, as the council sometimes accepts, you could do it that way. Otherwise, the, the amendment could be withdrawn and another amendment could be offered.
Okay, so however you'd like to handle it?
That's my clarification, if the chair and the secondary will allow me to do so.
Okay. Well, ju- just for a point of clarification, what the amendment would do would not change the ordinances coming back, but would ask the staff to actually bring back additional information. It would not be changing it from ten to twelve units, is that correct?
Not at this time.
Okay, gotcha.
I would like the information brought forward so that we could, if we wanted to, very easily at a future meeting.
Okay, very good. Okay, additional comments on that clarified amendment? Let's go to, you're okay, Karen?
Yeah.
Okay, how about Bill Krepke? Anything else?
Thank you. Does that include how we can increase higher users? Would that include that as well in that spreadsheet that you're looking for, Sam?
That's the intent, yeah.
Okay. Is that clear to everybody? Alan?
Robert, are you, you know what we're asking for here?
No, I don't.
Okay, why don't we do it? We can certainly bring back additional spreadsheets. I, we think we're there, okay. Now, there again, do we want, I'm just gonna call this an amendment, and there again. Jason, I'm gonna go back to you, I'm still trying to figure out how this is germane to the motion on the floor, because the motion on the floor is to move forward with drafting an ordinance using the other ones.
I, I think it would be an amendment to add the request that staff bring back the information.
Additional information, gotcha.
That's the only thing on the floor at this point.
Okay, very good, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we got there. Okay, everyone clear on the motion? Motion on the floor is the amended, the amendment, and that is to ask the staff to come back with additional information at first reading of the ordinance. Is, is that a fair statement? Alderman Quaker? Okay, very good. Everyone clear? Ron, have you, okay, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and go to Ron Wyffenbach since we did change the amendment on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't have any problem coming back with more information, but I don't wanna come back with more information, then come back and go back for more information again. So, if we wanna have more debate, I would, I guess I'd like to hear that, because if we're gonna, if this is gonna end the meeting for tonight without any further debate, then I would vote against the motion.
Okay, thank you. Additional comments? Seeing none, all is in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. So, amendment does pass, so we are back to the original motion. The original motion was to direct staff to start, draft the ordinances using scenario two on the water and the sewer, to include the fixed income relief, and to also come back with additional information. Everyone clear on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
Just to understand the broad issues here, which is really usage and historic usage, you've given a average that's fairly recent. My speculation is that over twenty years ago, or thirty or whatever, there was less water usage, and I'm just interested in knowing, and I see Bob Brink shaking his head no, I'm just curious, if, if ten is really an average over a long period of time, or whether we have gotten over, you know, the last fifty years, if we've really become less careful?
Robert?
Just, just a real quick fact, and shared this with Mr. Wyffenbach today. A number of years ago, maybe ten years ago, we had the highest amount of water the city had ever made, thirty-eight million gallons in one day. We had, if I remember right, twelve to thirteen thousand accounts at that point in time. Today, we have twenty thousand accounts, and in recent memory, the largest day of production we ever had was twenty-two million. So, you can see fewer accounts, we produced way more water than we did recently with higher number of accounts. So, that tells me conservation is working. People are using less water, they're thinking about it when they're turning their water on for their yard. There's new technologies out there, you have low-flow toilets, you have washers, you have showerheads. I think that you are seeing a trend, a downward trend in the use, and that's because people think about it more. I feel guilty when I see water going on sidewalk and streets, I mean, me personally, five years ago, I probably wouldn't have cared less about it, so I know my attitudes have changed, but I think we're seeing that across the city.
Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Alderman Sam Quaker.
A couple of, a couple of questions. My understanding that the motion does include the increase in the service fees or the, or the TAP fees, as they're also called, and those will go up by the same percentage over the next five years, that can you tell me what that would be for water and, water and sewer? That'd be roughly a fifty-eight percent increase on the, on the water side to correlate with the fifty-eight percent household increase.
Mr. Ellis?
It would follow the same pattern that you're seeing for the average single-family homeowner and what their monthly rates would be, yes.
And let me know if the fifty-eight percent number is, is a miscalculation, but that's a number that I calculated that under scenario two would be the increase over the next five years on the, on the water side for single-family residential homes. Is that a, is that an accurate calculation on my part?
I thought it was just a little bit less than that, but pretty close to that.
Okay, so I think I'm pretty close. I, you know, the, the number fifteen percent has been, has been discussed, and that is for one year, but this is a, an overall of fifty-eight percent increase in water rates over the next five years, and I, I believe we need to take a, a very strong look at use of, of twenty-twelve dollars to assist in this. There are many ways to, to figure, there are many ways to figure out the impact or calculate the impact of, of putting in infusions of cash into this fund. And in two thousand and four, when the council increased rates at that time, there was a significant change, or a reduction that was, that we were able to offer to the community by using a much smaller, you know, by using, I believe it was five to ten million dollars worth of twenty-twelve funds. Now, I'd like to make the case to look at, at what the impact of the entire next round would be front-loaded into these rate increases, and I think that that would be a worthy project to under, undertake. I also have a concern about the justification for increasing sewer rates at this time. Jackson Springs has, has been used as the, the reason, you know, we, we certainly need to, to build those, you know, to follow through and, and addressing the water supply issues. However, with, with the sewer rates, that same issue doesn't exist, and, and so I, I'm not convinced that we need to increase water rates dramatically and sewer rates dramatically at this time. This is going to hit people hard, and we need to be cognizant of that and to not, you know, to not throw too much out there at once in terms of rate increases. So, I would like the council to take a strong consideration of that as this comes back through the, back through the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't know if Robert was going to address something about sewer rates or not, if he was gonna address Sam's question. I'd like to hear that before I...
Okay, we'll go ahead and yield, and then we'll come back to you, Alderman Chapman. Go ahead, Robert.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wo- I wouldn't recommend increasing rates for any, when it's garbage water sewer unless it was needed. We took a very close look at the water reclamation enterprise, and today, the cash balance that we have in our reserve is below a recommended minimum. So, there's no ca, there's very little cash that is sitting there for some type of a failure. There's also about a five million dollars' worth of improvements that are needed at the water reclamation facility. That is an older structure, it'll be, it doesn't need rebuilding, but it does need some maintenance on some very critical parts. We have expensive infrastructure out there, namely the digester covers that have corroded, they, they need to be replaced, they have no more life left in them. So, we do have a series of, of improvements that are needed. It's nowhere near the order of magnitude that the water reclamation, or, excuse me, the water plants are in, but there are some improvements that are needed in the near term. Now, when you look at the rate increases for water rec, we have an increase of roughly twelve percent for the single-family homeowner, and then nine percent next year, then that tapers off to inflationary. But that's because we have a situation now where there's relatively no cash balance left, and we're staring down some, about five million dollars' worth of improvements that we're gonna have to bond for here in the next two years. So, today's situation is dire for water rec, it's not nearly as dire as it is for the water enterprise, but this is very easily corrected with two years' worth of rate increases tapering off to inflationary cost increases.
Okay, very good. Let's go back to Malcolm Chapman, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think the council and staff, and, I mean, everyone involved, I mean, has taken a long, hard look at and, and been considerate of thinking about where this puts the community or the rate payer, and, and I think we've done that. I, I think it was that infusion of money from the point one-six fund four or five years ago, we put four million dollars right off the top into rates. I, I think that, that, looking back on it, was probably not a wise thing to do. Sure, we wanna keep the rates as low as possible, but I think that's artificially keeping the rates low. Robert had a slide in, in one of those, in the presentation that showed that the council, as leaders of this community, did not raise rates for, it might have been a decade. I mean, I think that's, at some level, that's probably irresponsible, that would be irresponsible of us to think that we could artificially keep rates low today and not raise those rates as needed. An enterprise fund, by the definition of it, should support itself, and I would have think that, that that's what we would want the enterprise fund to do, to be able to be self-supported. I, I think that we've asked for that information about what would an infusion of five million dollars, ten million dollars, twenty million dollars, fifty million dollars do to this, and we saw that. Surely, we'll have this discussion as it comes through legal and finance, but it, it didn't alter the rates to the rate payer, I mean, significantly at all, and I'm talking about pennies per month is what it did to, to a rate payer's rate. So, I think we should have the discussion as it comes back through, but I think the council has been respectful and very considerate in thinking about what this does to rate payers in our community. So, I support the motion on the floor, which is to approve scenario two, bring back those ordinances, and have that discussion about what would it look like to take it to twelve CCF as opposed to ten. I mean, I look forward to those discussions.
Very good, thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I also looked at the twenty-twelve issue, and I think it was affecting people seventy-five cents a month would be the change on their rate per month if we use the fifty million from, that's if we got fifty million from twenty-twelve. And I guess that is my issue with twenty-twelve, is that sales tax, and you can base that on, I don't know, for the next five years, you're guessing. So, I'm trying to figure out how you'd guess that you could help the rate payers in the next five years by guessing how much you might be making on twenty-twelve. So, for me, if it made a... So, um, for me, um, if it made a significant impact, um, on people besides seventy-five cents a month, I guess I'd be willing to look at that. And if I knew, basically, how much we were supposed to be making for the next five years on twenty-twelve, like I said, it's kind of a guess game on that, on sales tax. And with the economy like it is, I wouldn't base, um, helping people on something right now that, uh, we don't know what's going to happen. I'm with Malcolm. I think, uh, what the problem was, was people being politically correct and not raising these rates for sixteen years. We waited too long and were irresponsible in the fact that now we have transit rates, sewer rates, water rates, um, garbage rates. Everything's going up because we were being politically correct so, so long, we drained an enterprise fund doing it. So now we have to go back and have an increase on people because we couldn't do it, and now we're worried about helping, um, certain people, which I understand is a positive, and, and we are doing that. But, um, in that interim, again, without making change, that's the justification. You have to take care of your, your water, you have to take care of your sewer and your garbage. So the justification is, um, there's no balance or a low balance in the enterprise fund, and we need to take care of our water system. We need Jackson Springs. We need to fix these issues that've been there, this wave since nineteen sixty-one. Why they haven't been taken care of? I, I truly believe people were being politically correct and didn't want to raise anything. So now we're doing some of this now to justify it. Again, it's been sixteen years, so we've waited too long for change. So now we have to make a difference now, and unfortunately, it's on the council that is today. So, um, if you want justification, how long have you been on the council? And when should I have started? So, there you go. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you. In visiting about this issue, as we've moved through the whole decision about Jackson Springs and the water treatment plant, I have with colleagues, and I have even publicly said, I would certainly consider twenty-twelve funding. But I realize that we, we call this an enterprise fund, but essentially what we have is a utility business. And one of the things the public constantly asks us is to treat, uh, that the city should be more like, run more like a business. And in fact, when we talk about the rate structure that is being proposed, we essentially are recognizing the fact that this is a business and that, um, we, the rates need to meet the obligations of both providing water and the kind of upkeep, and then the, the, the kind of capital in, uh, investment that needs to take place in any business. So I remind my colleagues, we're not talking something that's out of the purview of the public. Um, the public asks us to run the city government like a business. And in my mind, with this step, we are doing that. And so while I did consider twenty-twelve as a funding source, it's, I have some hesitation about that. I'm not, I'm not unwilling to talk about it, but on the other hand, it seems to me that, um, this fun, this, this, this business needs to pay for itself. And I think the, I think the community understands that. It was very helpful, Robert, when we were at West, um, Middle School. I think that question was asked. And, um, the fact that you pointed out the loss of other infrastructure needs that, that are being met through twenty-twelve would be lost if we have this large infusion of money from twenty-twelve really struck a chord with me. Because I understand that, um, not everybody in this community actually buys water from the city. I don't. Last, uh, no, a year ago in November, our well failed. And we looked at, I think about somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen thousand dollars replacing a pump and some line and some other things. So, um, that discussion isn't, doesn't necessarily involve me, and I know there's other people that aren't involved, too. So I guess the point is not what happens to Karen Olson, but the point is that a business is dependent on those who use the services, and the rates that they are charged should be, um, commensurate with that. So I think that's important for my colleagues to remember, that when we shift money from twenty-twelve, we are shifting money away from roads and infrastructure, which in my mind benefits everyone. I mean, every person in some, in some fashion uses the roads in our community. They use the other kinds of infrastructure. So it seems to me it makes sense. And I, um, I will listen to the conversation about an infusion of additional dollars from twenty, twenty-twelve, but I would certainly like to, um, it would have to be with the understanding that we are subsidizing somebody's water rates. And, um, that discussion almost makes, needs to take place, in my mind, outside of this discussion, because what we are saying is, okay, here's a group of people that we are going to, for some, in my mind, very important reason, treat differently than how we are going to be treating everyone else. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alder, Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I guess as a, as a person that sat up here at this dais for a long period of time, I, I kind of take offense when council members try and put the blame of us raising water rates today on previous councils. There's no question that, over the years, just like it is tonight, it's awful hard for an elected official to raise rates. And I guess I would contend that if we had raised rates over the years, the people using water today would really be paying a lot of money, because they ought to be thankful that we've kept the rates low. Because any money that we would have had in the enterprise fund basically would have been spent, and it would have been spent on, um, the water treatment plants. And so we would have been at a higher rate today that we're paying for water, and we'd still have to increase the rates, basically what we're increasing them by nine percent a year, or whatever it is, uh, to pay for the water treatment plant. So, um, I do take offense on, uh, being charged that it was previous councils that put us in this predicament. And the second of all, I mean, we've done a lot of discussion on twenty-twelve, and Jason, I don't know if you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this council cannot tie the hands of previous councils, and we cannot spend money that we don't have, which is the next go-around of twenty-twelve. So, though I, hopefully, when that comes about, and the next twenty-twelve comes about, that the council will look very seriously at using that money for, uh, the water treatment plants. We're, we're prematurely speaking about it tonight because we can't do a thing about that. So with that, Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Did you want Jason to answer that question, or? Okay, Jason, you understand the question? The question was, uh, can this council, uh, in essence, uh, appropriate money for the next round of twenty-twelve?
The answer is no. The twenty-twelve program requires a five-year plan, and the time for adoption of that has not arrived yet, and the council hasn't taken that preliminary step. However, Alderman Kroger is correct, at the next, um, appointed time for a new five-year plan, the council could, at that time, consider it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh, let's go to, I'm gonna go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy, who has not spoken yet this evening, and then we'll go back down through the, through the line, trying to do this in, in the appropriate order. So let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I just called a question, please.
Okay. Didn't expect that one. Is there a second? Okay. There is a motion on the floor to call the question, and a second. There is no discussion on that. We will go to the motion to call the question. We're not on the original motion. The motion only is to call the question. Everyone clear on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, let's do a roll call, please.
Quaker?
No.
Olson? Aye. Kroger? Hadcock?
No.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Martinson? Weyfendbach?
No.
Okrebki?
No.
Chapman?
No.
Okay, motion failed. So now we are back to the original motion, and we will go down the line now. Uh, let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I would encourage the council not to downplay the effect of, of a fifty-million-dollar possible infusion of, of twenty-twelve funds into the, uh, into the rates, uh, the rate structure. A hundred and thirty-five million dollar bond minus fifty, uh, that's eighty-five million, that's a significant reduction. Now, perhaps I can get the numbers from you, Robert, later on, but if, but my recollection from two thousand and four is, is that, that four million dollars did provide, um, some relief. And, you know, it is much more than, the way it's presented here, the first year it's eighty-five, uh, eighty-five cents, but the very last year on the chart is seven dollars and thirty-seven cents a month. So it's all in how the, the numbers are presented and calculated, and I think that we need to have more discussion on that. As far as tying the hands of future councils, when the city bonded the civic center, it was bonded out to twenty-fourteen. We can, as a council, if we want to, convene a twenty-twelve meeting, go into the ordinance, open up the ordinance, and determine whether we want to, use twenty-twelve funds, uh, to assist with, with the rates. We could do that. The council has indeed, uh, you know, done something similar, uh, in, in, in the past. So I, if we're able to justify it for Skyboxes, I think we should justify it for the, for the rates. I, it's a fair, I think it's a fair statement, and it's, it's a fair direction, uh, to, to go. So I would ask that we take a strong look at, at, uh, using, uh, twenty-twelve, uh, funds. I also look, look forward to receiving more information on the, on the true impact on the school district and the irrigators. My understanding is it will be compounded thirty percent increases, and it'll be a very, very large increase for the, for the irrigators. And I, I think that those that are irrigating, uh, there are, I don't think there's that many irrigation meters out there. They need to know what a dramatic, uh, increase they're, uh, they're looking at. Thank you.
Here, let's go to Alderman Bill Okrebki.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm okay with the, with the water. We need to, we need to get our enterprise funds back up again. And I agree with Alderman Olson that we should be running these enterprise funds as a business. And we should, and, and they should be self-sufficient, and we should make it that way. I also want to, somehow, we need to break away the water and the sewer rates, because I think they're, I'm okay with the water, but I'm struggling with the sewer. You know, we're looking at the sewer, uh, some options that are coming through. I mean, different technology that may save us a bunch of money. You know, this, what's this, two million dollars that could, that could trans, that we potentially could get, uh, in, instead of us paying that two million dollars to put that sewer line in from Fifth and Catron to sixteen, to let a developer do it and using a TIF. There's also a possibility of, you know, with the ramification of, of having that, a regional kind of, of sewer system, and that's in the works. And I don't know where it is on the, I don't know where it is on the radar screen. It's, 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 it's there somewhere, and I don't know what kind of traction that's getting. I don't know what, but the point I'm making is, is that, that there's things in here that, that, that aren't being addressed and debated and talked about that we may want to consider before we just arbitrarily raise the sewer rates. And so if we can save, uh, if we can save the taxpayers, in, in essence, by being a better business in using some of these other ideas, then perhaps we should. And so I'm not sure how we break away the sewer and, and the water rates to, to address some of these other issues. Because a two-million-dollar, if two-million dollars comes off your, your, your plate, that can go into doing the five million dollars that you're talking about, no, we probably should. And I don't know where we want to be on the council. Those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I think we're getting close here. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock. I believe everyone's had at least two or three opportunities, I think, to talk to the motion. So Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Didn't we just say that we couldn't use the twenty-twelve process? Or can we use it like we did Skyboxes?
Jason?
Under the current ordinance, twenty-twelve is not available other than as currently set out in the adopted plan. Alderman Quaker is correct that if the council was inclined to amend the twenty-twelve ordinance at the end of the five-year plan, or prior to the end of the five-year plan, you could do something different. But that takes an ordinance change, so it's not available today.
So if we wanted to do ordinance change, to take the fifty million, use it, and affect the ratepayers by seventy-five cents for each ratepayer, we could do it?
Yes, that's within the authority of the council.
Okay. I appreciate that. And not that I'm not in favor of that, I just kind of want to see what that scenario would be, or how we'd end up with that. It just seems like, right now, listening to the discussion, it doesn't seem like a possibility. But if it is, and it's gonna make a major effect, then I was willing to change in a certain extent of just kind of seeing what we could do. But, long story short, um, at this time, I'm not willing to change that. Um, another thing is, is, um, the comment was made, and why I said that is changes politically correct, is because if it wasn't that difference back then, it wouldn't have been garbage, transit, and all the things that are coming now. And now it's economically not a good time. So I can understand, um, a, a person saying it's not other councils and not trying to do a blame game, but there's also got to be a point where we gotta step up to the plate and do our job as a council. And, and if this water treatment is, it's been done in nineteen sixty-one, and nothing's been done to the old treatment plant till lately, then I guess, uh, and, and I know they've come up with some of this stuff, because when I first started, we didn't have the money for it. So it is previous councils, and it's us as a council now to make a difference. So, um, to get infrastructure done, we've, we were behind on reservoirs, live stations, water and sewer, um, tons of stuff, until somebody stepped up and said, "It's time to do our infrastructure. It's time to do some of this stuff." And we started caring about the things, and not, that I shouldn't say caring, because I think previous councils did do their jobs, but it's very hard, as you see, to raise the rates. Now, we're in a bind, almost in a sense, that these things have to be done. And as Robert says, there's not gonna be enough water to sustain if we don't get Jackson Springs, if we don't redo that treatment plant. We put ourselves in a situation where we have to do it now. Well, then, whose fault is it? We make the policy. We make the difference. So who, when we were doing this, do we, do we make a difference on? Who was the previous councils? I'm not including just you, Mr. Kroger, I'm including all of us. It's all of us. We needed to step up a while ago. Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Robert. Go ahead, Robert.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, uh, you know, we presented the water reclamation rate increases for every council meeting we've had. We've presented them to the public meetings we had. There's never really been any question about that. I assume that everybody understood the need, uh, for these rate increases. And so I'm a little bit disturbed tonight that there's some discussion about, let's, let's just not even talk about the sewer, because I can guarantee you that if, if this issue is addressed this year, I'll be back next year saying, "We need an even bigger rate increase." Because if we keep deferring these costs and these improvements, and, and the, the TIF, or however the sewer along Highway sixteen is funded, if it's not funded through the enterprise, I guarantee you there are a number of projects that are unfunded that are waiting in the wing to be built. We've got a forty-four-inch sewer line. It's the only sewer line that feeds the water reclamation facility. All the sewer that is generated by this city goes through that forty-four-inch line. It's getting to the point where it needs to be replaced. There's a lot of projects like that. They're not in the program, but they need to be. And it's because there is only enough funding to do its limited number of projects. And so even if one of those projects disappears, there's five others waiting in the wing. So I guess, I just want to let you know, these rates for sewer are just as important as they are for water, and if we wait for these, it's gonna be even more dramatic next year when we're talking about this.
Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really want to argue, but, uh, what Alderman Hadcock, uh, stated, I mean, it has some valid points, but, uh, and actually, you know, until, uh, Jackson Springs went down, or we could no longer use it, it would have been pretty hard for this council to tell the general public that they wanted to upgrade the water treatment plant when it was only being used probably two weeks out of the summer, and that was it. They never would have went for that. So actually, it's just been, since Jackson Springs went down, that a red flag really come up and said that we need to, we need to upgrade our current water treatment plant. So, uh, actually, Alderman Hadcock was probably on the council of, when Jackson Springs was still online. So the blame is up here just as well as it is, I guess, in previous councils. And, and to go, talking about the enterprise funds, I, I remember when the water reclamation plant, prior to us upgrading that system, we had, I think it was probably six million dollars in that account in the enterprise fund. And it was almost on a monthly basis that the council was trying to get those funds to do something else. So it's prudent to have money in your enterprise fund. You definitely need that, there's no question about it. And I know today, if Robert was given ten million dollars to put in each one of those accounts, he could come to the, uh, Public Works meeting tomorrow and have that all spent, because there's that many, that... all spent, because there's that many, that kind of projects out there that need to be accomplished. So, it's gonna be a challenge, one way or another, but unfortunately, you know, what they've brought forward has to be done. And I guess I would urge the council to move forward. And, as I stated before, I'm not really interested in going in and changing the 2012 plan, and I don't think we need to do that today. But I would certainly encourage the council in the next go around 2012 to use those dollar amounts to help fund this project. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to make the council aware, that I think in, in big-picture terms, we've done what we were asked to do tonight in terms of picking a scenario, sending that scenario through the process, so that we could then have discussion about it. So, without trying to call the question again, I, I would say that all of the big-picture debate probably has happened tonight, and I would recommend that we just move the process along, so that we could at least start to have the nuts and bolts of the conversation, and what changes need to be made, or amendments, or 2012 and all of that. We can look at all of that as it continues to go through the process. That's not gonna happen tonight. So I don't know if it's appropriate for tonight's discussion. So I would just urge us to vote.
Thank you very much. I have one more light, and then we're headed towards the vote. We have Alderman Ron Wytham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just, I'll be short, but I just, I don't think it's, maybe Mr. Ellis can answer this, but I don't think it's, every so often that the EPA comes in and shuts down your water system. I think that, I don't believe that anyone in the council people here would disagree the fact that securing our water supply for today and for twenty years in the future is not the appropriate thing to do. I think it is the appropriate thing to do. I think confer- conversation, conservation has taken effect over the last several years after having the discussions with, with Mr. Ellis today. And, and sometimes in the future, looking back twenty years from now, or thirty years from now, understanding what this, this facility will do for the city of Rapid City, and, and taking care of the obsolescence and, and, and things that we do have existing in today's environment out there. And I would, if my colleagues haven't been through the tour of the water treatment plants, and been to the facilities, I would, I would, I think you'd be highly surprised when you go out there and look and see how annotated that material is, and the fact is that, that is the number one priority for our city, and for our city council. And I do appreciate the debate tonight, and I'm willing to stay here all night long, if it takes us all night long, to debate and get the issues out, and, and whatever it takes. But I do encourage the council people, if you haven't been to the system, and you haven't been to the treatment plant, go out there and take a look and see how vulnerable it is to the, to the environment, and to outside nitrates and those types of things that can infiltrate into our system, into our aquifer, and things like that. So I just, I appreciate the council's debate tonight. And any conversation to stymie that debate, will, I will hopefully try to shut down automatically. This is a big decision that we make, but it is one of the number one decisions that our council can be tasked with. I mean, if there's anything that our council should do, and spend a lot of time doing, is, is securing our water supply from today into the future, as long as we can predict. And I think this membrane system, from my understanding of the system, is, is of the future. It's not of today, it's of the future. And going forward, there'll be a, a lot of opportunity, if, if, if it needs to be increased in size, and those things will be approached. Now, attacking the sewer, the sewer treatment plant, I'm not exactly sure that where that stands. My understanding is there is room for growth there. It's not an obsolescent plant at this point. But, understanding that there is opportunity for infrastructure that needs to be replaced. If we don't take those increases today, we will be faced with the golf ball coming down the garden hose. So, but I still like to have the debate. I like to hear what my council members have to say, my, my colleagues. I like to hear what the public has to say, and what Robert has to say. So, but I think this is coming to a conclusion, and a, a good conclusion. Thank you.
Okay. We have one more light. Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to note, too, that this booklet that we have does not have the, the sewer rate increases in it, the same charts that we had for, for water. So, and I think I have the most recent version of the booklet. So, if we could get that information as it, as it comes back through the process, I would really appreciate that. And, once again, I, I think that we are remiss in, in not taking a strong look at, at using the next round of, of 2012 funds to assist with this, this project. It's be a far more than an impact of seventy-five cents a month. And I think that it's not accurate to say that it would only be a seventy-five cent impact. It would be a, a good impact for this. And, once again, the, the counterpoint to the argument that it would not have an impact is that in two thousand and four, it was, it was decided by the council that a four million dollar infusion would have an impact. So, I think we need to take a, a strong, a strong look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go, geez. That's all right. Let's go to Deb Hadcock.
Is this the sewer increases in the booklet? Robert?
My copy does have that, so perhaps one of the copies just didn't get it. I apologize if that's the case.
Slide sixty-two, I think, is what it reads.
Yeah. Recommended sewer increase, or recommended fee increases, impact, bond sale.
Okay.
Oh, you need, you need charts, not figures?
Anything else, Deb?
No, I just, I just recommend moving forward with this. It does have it in your books. Hopefully, we can move this session forward.
Thank you. Let's go to Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I apologize for speaking again, but maybe I wasn't clear in what I said. Maybe I wasn't clear. I haven't tried to cut off anybody from conversation tonight, or not bring any conversation forward, or debate, or whatever people wanna have. But it just seems to me that we're saying the same thing over and over. No one has said we could, we should not have a discussion about using 2012 funds. No, I don't think that that's what I've heard. There's nothing that this council can do about an infusion of 2012 funds into this plan tonight. It's impossible. We cannot do it. I'm not saying that people shouldn't bring that forward if they wanna bring it forward. Fine, bring it forward. Bring it forward in the appropriate manner. Bring forward 2012, open up the process, tear apart the ordinance, change the ordinance, so that 2012 funds could be used in this round, if that's what you so choose to do. All I'm saying is that everything that this council can do tonight in terms of making a decision, or to get to that decision, I think has been done. The decision before us tonight is to approve one of these scenarios, or another scenario. Someone has a better plan, put that plan out there, send it through the process, which is legal and finance, and then let's start the discussion. No one's tried to stymie any discussion, or say we couldn't use 2012, or that some person from our public, who I guess is not here, 'cause the public is not here. No one has said that they couldn't write a ten million dollar check, and that would impact rates. If we think that that's what's gonna happen, then bring that to legal and finance when this goes through the, the process. No one's trying to cut anybody off, or not say that there's money that we can't use. If you think that there is, bring it forward through the process. But we cannot use 2012 funds tonight. That's what our city attorney said. We cannot use it tonight. And that's my point.
Okay. Thank you. The motion on the floor is to direct staff to go ahead and draft the ordinances, using Scenario Two for both the water, and then also the recommendation for the sewer. And including in that, the recommendation that we come up with a income-based formula to help low-income folks, and also to bring back the additional information that was requested. Okay? Everyone clear on that motion? Seeing no lights. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes with one no from Alderman Sam Quaker. Thank you. Two, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you down there. Two, Alderman Sam Quaker and Alderman Bill O'Krepke. Why don't we do this? Marcia, let's take a break until seven-thirty, and then we'll come back and talk about TIFs. I got my big mallet back, so. Everybody up? We'll go ahead and call the special council meeting back into order out of recess. Second thing on the item is the Tax Increment Financing Guideline recommendations. And, just for, there again, for parliamentary procedure, if we could just get a motion for discussion, please. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Thank you, everyone. Marcia.
Thank you. Rumor has it there's the baseball game, or a football game, or something on someplace. So we'll try to be quick about this. On behalf of the fourteen members of the Tax Increment Financing Guidelines Review Committee, we are presenting the final report to you. The committee was originally formed at the request of the city council by Mayor Hanks, with the approval of the council, on August sixth of two thousand and seven. I want to thank Malcolm Chapman, Bill O'Krepke, Karen Gunderson Olson, Sam Quaker, Deb Hadcock, Jason Green, and Robert Ellis, along with Pauline Sumption, also Dan Dryden, Bob Brant, Orbit C. Beatty, and Mike Tennyson for their efforts and the many hours that they've spent on this. Also need to acknowledge Karen Bowman and Charlene Mitchell for putting this together and finalizing the documents for you. Again, tonight, we're here after a total of twenty meetings over the last year. We had a public briefing section in October of oh-seven, and then a public hearing. And then subsequently, after the work was done, and the draft was ready for presentation on July twenty-fourth, the committee also held a public hearing. Those draft recommendations, they took to heart the comments that were received, and you have copies of all the minutes attached online, so you can see the discussions that have gone on before the committee. In fact, they asked one of the subcommittees to go back and reconsider some of the issues that had come up through that process. So finally, on October seventeenth, the committee met and issued this final report. The recommendations are contained in the guidelines that have been distributed. You should have a copy of that in your box. Hope you all pick that up, and we'll take the time to go through it. There's a summary to begin with, and we'll briefly go through those recommendations that come forward. First of all, the committee recommends that the membership of the Tax Increment Financing Committee be revised to eliminate the staff as voting members, and to add representation of the Pennington County Commissioners. Specifically, two city council members appointed by the mayor and council leadership would serve on this, along with two planning commission members appointed by the mayor, economics development partnership president, or his or her representative, one representative of the Rapid City Area School District, or his or her representative appointed by the school board president, one member of the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, or his or her representative appointed by the Pennington County Board of Commissioners. So the form of the Tax Increment Review, Project Review Committee would change. The committee would make recommendations, and those meetings would be public, with the minutes recorded, including streaming audio, and with public comment allowed, and notice of the public meetings provided. This is, again, a fundamental change in the way the committee would operate. Committee would, has recommended to you incorporation of the statutory language for the blight criteria into the policy. There's a copy of the draft attached in your booklet. The committee would recommend, recommends the city council approve the following revised language, modifying the recently improved interest rate benchmark language. As you recall, in April, we changed the way that we calculated the interest for these. After a lot of discussion, and further discussion by a subcommittee, this recommendation comes forward, which each applicant shall provide a tax increment financing proposal from a prospective lender of his choosing, which shall address these loan terms and conditions, fixed or variable interest rates, if variables state the frequency of the pricing adjustments, interest rate index, interest rate spread over and under index, and have any loan term, collateral that's provided, guarantee requirements for the developer. All of these are aimed at trying to ensure that we get the best deal for the taxpayers of Rapid City, also the identity of interest between developer and the lender. City finance officer would then review and analyze the proposed financing terms, and forward a recommendation for approval or disapproval to the city council, along with the developer's agreement or proposal for refinancing. I think it's key to recognize that the committee acknowledges the fact that this will happen at the time the developer's agreement is coming forward. If the city finance officer concludes the proposal is not competitive with current market conditions, or otherwise unsatisfactory, a report detailing deficiency then comes forward to the city council. Again, another option is to ensure that the city reserves the right to require refinance to give any existing tax increment finance loans, utilizing whatever means the city decides most beneficial to the taxpayers at any time during the term of the developer's agreement. This would go forward with future developer's agreements. Again, this is to ensure that the city taxpayers are getting the best deal, and that we can pay off these tax increment districts as quickly as possible. Again, for purposes of the project plan, all interest expenses shall be calculated, utilizing a fixed rate of nine percent, not to exceed but nine percent. Realizing then that the interest amount paid over the life of the project plan would at no time exceed that total amount that's included in the project plan. The goal is to try to get to a variable interest rate, so that we can get the best deal possible. But we also have to have an outside number to ensure and protect the public. Committee recommends that the city finance office provide an annual summary of all active tax increment finance districts, and there's a copy of one of those attached to your document, provides good information, and I think the committee was very pleased to have this, and felt it was important for the council to get that each year. Committee recommends the city finance office review each active tax increment finance district, and provide a recommendation to the council on the utilization of revenue bonds to refinance those districts to reduce the interest rate, provided that there's sufficient revenues. Again, this is trying to look at the ones that we have now, if it was possible to refinance those, for us to evaluate those, but more importantly, for the ones going forward under new developer's agreements. Again, trying to identify the identity of the individuals involved, whether it's an LLC, or an LLP, or corporation partnerships, investors, and the like. This is a critical issue, and the application, as well as the recommendation for the language outlined here, comes forward to, again, try to ensure that that information is available to the council. Committee recommended that language be added to disclosure requirements, to make sure that the applicant is under continuing obligation to update the disclosure within thirty days of any change throughout the application process, and also throughout the life of the developer's agreement. Also, that a publicly traded corporation is deemed to comply with the disclosure requirements with submission of the most current annual report. Ninth recommendation, the committee recommends that Item Six, under process for revising approved tax increment district project plans, be revised to read, may approve, amend, or reject, ensuring that it's clear that the council has the authority to do any one of those actions when there is a revision to the plan. Ten, the committee recommends the city council adopt an ordinance establishing a public hearing notification process for tax increment financing request, requiring that these are set for hearing at city council prior to the presentation of the planning commission's recommendation at the legal and finance committee, again, furthering the public notice. Also, the committee recommends that certified return receipt mailings be sent to property owners inside the district boundaries, and that first-class mailings be sent to property owners adjacent to district boundaries. Twelve, the committee recommends adoption of a thousand-dollar application fee. The also, the committee recommends an increased imputed administrative fees for the tax increment district as follows. That's not to, a minimum of twenty thousand dollars paid as part of the project plan cost, to be paid as a project cost at the end of year five. Again, for initial tax increment district applications, including phasing, there would be an additional two thousand dollars administrative fee paid, along with any subsequent changes would be a five thousand imputed administrative fee. Again, this is to ensure that the city's cost of processing applications is being repaid through the tax increment district. Fourteen, the committee recommends the project plan identify the actual percentage of commercial and industrial zone acreage in the proposed district. You've already seen this in a number of project plans that have come forward. Fifteen, the committee recommends that written justification be provided by the applicant when the sum of the necessary and convenient cost and contingency cost line items exceed ten percent of the total project cost. Again, trying to get a better handle on these costs, make sure that it's clearly identified why those costs are being included. Sixteen, the committee recommends the developer be required to provide an item list of the estimated cost, including the professional fees. Seventeen, the committee recommends retaining the current affordable housing language, and the formation of an additional committee to look at this issue, anticipating that there'll be additional recommendations that come forward out of that committee in the future, as they finish their work. Nineteen, the committee recommends approval of the following revisions to the tax increment financing section of the existing policy, basically outlining the various aspects for which the tax increment financing could be used. This is very similar to what's included in the current plan, with minor revisions. Twenty, the committee recommends approval of following allowable project cost language. These would be allowable costs, oversizing costs for sewer, water, and streets required by the city of Rapid City, extension of off-site sewer, water, street, and public improvements to the development site, oversizing costs for storm drainage detention and transmission facilities to accommodate stormwater runoff beyond that generated by the development, reconstruction of existing streets, water, sewer sidewalks, or other public infrastructure, regional lift stations, pump stations, or other public facilities to be owned by the city of Rapid City, public playgrounds, parks, recreational improvements to be owned by the city of Rapid City, demolition costs for removal of existing structures or infrastructure, interest and financing fees, imputed administrative fees due to the city, removal and replacement of contaminated soils, professional fees limited to engineering, design, survey, and construction management associated with the allowable project cost, and costs at sole discretion of this governing body, which are found to be necessary or convenient to the creation of the tax increment district or the implementation of the project plan. Probably more importantly is the list of those project costs, which are not authorized unless specifically authorized by the council. Those included acquisition of equipment or other permanent features, fixtures, private developments, site improvements, including them unlimited to parking lots- developments, site improvements, including unlimited parking lots, landscaping, driveways, sight lighting, sidewalks, signs, grading of fill, real property assembly costs, including land acquisition, clearing and grading of land, relocation costs, organizational costs, professional service fees, including engineering, design, survey, and construction management fees associated with project costs not allowed as part of the project plan, alteration, remodeling, repair, or reconstruction of existing buildings or structures, and legal and developer fees. Again, these were the costs that they felt were appropriate for consideration as part of the project costs. I've given you a quick overview of what is really the summary of a year's worth of work by the committee. Again, I think it's important to thank them for their efforts. They bring forward this recommendation for your consideration. And again, if you have questions, we have a number of the members of the committee that are here this evening, as well as those that serve on the council, to address those and to learn as to how you intend to dispose of this item.
You can breathe, you can breathe now, Marcia.
I can.
You did a good job. Thank you.
Quickly, too.
Okay. I'm starting to see a number of lights, just, you know. Last time, I didn't think we were going to have that much debate. I'm going to just give everybody a heads up. I will be making sure that we follow the council's rules and I will be tracking the number of times people speak. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I think it was Kroger. Just kidding. I love Kroger. Actually, I'd like to thank the committee for everything they've done. Wow, that was a great committee. Lot of discussion, lot of debate, lot of looking things up, lot of people coming from the public that were watching it, that we appreciated coming, ones in the audience today. Nice lady. I appreciated you and all the people that had came for listening to us and learning about the process, which was awesome. Again, I just think it was a good committee. We came up with some great things, thanks to the staff. They did an awesome job as well, getting these things done, preparing this book. I think it's a great guideline for what can happen in the future for our TIFs and how to make them better, so they are stronger and in a positive way, doing hopefully the things we need to do for our community in the most possible and positive way. So again, thank you for all that people have done for this book. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olsen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would it be appropriate to offer a motion to?
There's a motion on the floor.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, the motion on the floor, I think it was approval, but I think probably the appropriate motion is direct staff to draft the appropriate ordinance and resolutions to enact the recommendations.
Yeah, what you said, Malcolm.
Okay. I thought, I thought, okay. Let's go back to Alderman or Alderwoman Karen Olsen.
That motion must have had too much, not enough transparency, because I missed that. Sorry. I will say that one of the most important things that has emerged from all the discussion that has taken place is, I think, the level of transparency regarding TIFs has clearly been significantly improved. I think those who, in the community, who were concerned that the business of the city was not being conducted in a totally public setting, I think will be very reassured by knowing the level of transparency that is now a part of this process. And I applaud all of those who brought forward their concerns in regard to this, and I'm glad that we are moving forward in a way in which I think the general public is going to understand this, the use of tax increment funding better. And in addition, securing information in regard to what is happening and their usage is going to be much more, is going to be apparent to the community. So I'll be supporting. I watched the process. I was grateful for all my colleagues and the very fine expertise of those who joined us. And so I'll be in support of the motion on the floor. I think it's a good thing to move forward.
Thank you. Additional discussion. Motion on the floor. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wythen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too applaud everybody's efforts in bringing these guidelines together and the expertise that was put into them. And there's a lot of good thought that went into this process and understanding that the process is only as good as the implementation, not to rain on anybody's parade, but I just would like to, you know, going forward in the future, that there was a lot of thought and a lot of opportunity and time put into this process. And I'm hoping that we use this process going forward. And when we get into these committees and we ask volunteers from the community to come to these meetings and volunteer their expertise, that we treat them and the like, that they understand what they're getting into, they understand this is the process, the information from this process is brought forward at the time, as it explains in here, under application requirements and application for the use of tax increment must include the following information of the project will not be processed. I think it's an important note to be made because I think it's appropriate that information is available to these committees when they come to make decisions, they have this information available as per the guidelines outlined. And I just, I can't, I guess, hammer that point home enough, that the fact is that the guidelines are in place, the process is in place, and the transparency is in place. Now we just have to make sure we utilize it. And we utilize it as these fellows and these people set forward. And this will help eliminate a lot of the perception or any of the problems that may exist. So again, I applaud the people that put their time and effort, and they truly worked hard to come up with something that was workable, had good guidelines. And now I just hope that it's, we're adhered to this and we use it properly as noted. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Let's go to Patty Martenson.
Yeah, I'd like a clarification on one of the recommended changes, number 14. I kind of want to understand the thinking behind it.
Marcia, 14, which talks about the?
14, yeah, the percentage of commercial industrial zone acreage.
Go ahead, please.
The issue goes to whether or not a TIF is an economic development tax increment financing district. Under state statute, it only requires that there be one parcel that is zoned commercially or industrially, or intended to be zoned commercially or industrially. The committee felt it was better to look at the entire area to realize what the percentage was as it affects the payback, the other tax revenues that would come forward, and whether or not the council ultimately felt it was truly an economic development tax increment financing district, even though it might meet the state statute.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you. Additional discussion. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too just echo what I've heard up here already in terms of everyone, especially from the private sector lending their expertise and then all of the staff and all the committee members who worked hard on this for 14 months. Just to piggyback on what Patty asked, what we've recommended is just that that information is noted, not that we can't make a decision based on the percentage of parcel, percentage of commercial parcel. It's just now that it's noted that something is 10 percent commercial of this overall. Is that correct?
Marcia.
That is correct. Just to ensure the council has more information.
Another question regarding recommendation number 11, and maybe this is just wordsmithing, but it says, "The committee recommends that certified return receipt mailing be sent to property owners inside the district." That's inside the proposed district, isn't it? Because the district hasn't been formed yet, is that?
That would be correct.
Okay. If we could maybe just change that language, and I think it's in there twice, so it should be proposed district.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep. Alderman Chapman, anything else? Thank you, sir. Additional discussion. Motion on the floor is for approval to direct the staff to prepare the appropriate ordinances and resolutions to institute the recommended changes as per noted. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Well, before we go there, let me add my two cents. I want to thank all the members of the, of the committee. I want to thank the staff support. I attended a number of these different, different meetings, and I'm going to tell you, they spent an awful lot of time looking at a lot of different, a lot of different items from different angles. And I just, I truly appreciate the time, the effort, and the detail that they put into this. I know that there was some criticism in the public for the amount of time that this was taking. I will tell you, my preference is to get it right and I get it quick. And so I appreciate the fact that they were willing to take the time to do their due diligence, make sure that they get it right, because this is a very important issue for the community. There's been an awful lot of people watching this process, and I truly believe that it does what was probably lacking before, and that is create the transparency that it really is needed in approving TIFs. So thank you so much for myself, and I know an awful lot of folks in the community will appreciate it also. Seeing no further lights. The motion on the floor is for approval to direct staff. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion on that motion?